Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners meeting for August 1st, 2023. This time I'd like to get Commissioner Perkins to do the invocation and Commissioner Mobley to do the pledge. You'll stand, please.
Let's pray. God our Father be coming for you this time, dear God. Lord, thank you for your minute blessings bestowed upon us. We thank you for allowing us to be in this place, dear God, to do the things that's necessary for this county, dear God, that you've blessed this board, dear God, to fulfill the requests and thanks of this county, dear God, that will meet every need, dear God. Pray, God, that you'll bless those, dear God, that we have in our departments, God, look on them in the mighty way, dear God. Look on the underfather, God, those that's in our armed forces, God, you bless them with God in the mighty way. Ask the underfather to look upon, dear God, our first responders, look on, dear God, our sheriff department, look on, dear God, our every department we have, dear God, and we give you the praise and the glory. From Christ we pray. Amen.
Moving on to item number one, approval of minutes for the July 12th, 2023 regular board meeting and the July 18th, 2023 workshop. Is there any discussion, changes, or a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Perkins.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Perkins.
That's all right. Tyrone.
Moving on to the consent agenda, pulling items number four, and item number eight is deferred to another meeting. So we'll be looking at items two, three, five through seven, and nine through 12. Is there any discussion, or can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We're gonna hold up here just one second. I don't want to pull those pulled items for discussion, we'll go to the time specific. At 5:35, or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold the second of two public hearings to consider adoption of an ordinance for LDR 23-04, an application by the Board of County Commissioners to amend section 4.20.1 of the Land Development Regulations entitled Districts in Intent for ICS Industrial Catalyst Site, changing rural area of critical economic concern, a rural area of opportunity, and allowing expansion of a catalyst site to properties that are contiguous or adjacent to lands which have received that designation from the governor. Mr. Meeks.
Do you swear firm testimony you're giving this cause to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Anyone wishing to speak on this, if you would stand and raise your hand at this time to be sworn in? Thank you. Mr. Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this would be the second of required two public hearings to adopt text change to the Land Development Regulations. The proposed changes specifically affect the industrial catalyst site zoning designation in the land use regulations. Throughout the state, there has been some rewording. When this was originally created, we were known as a rural area of critical economic concern, and those areas are now known as rural areas of opportunities. We redefine that, and we've also put in some language that will allow us to expand at a local level the original designation of which the governor had granted us for catalyst site. State no longer does that designation as we went over the first public hearing involving this text change, so there's really no avenue to go in and amend that boundary from the original designation. So we can still use that designation locally because we've created a zoning district around it, so lands that are contiguous or adjacent to that land use classification and zoning district would allow us to include them in the boundary of that catalyst site. So you have before you a proposed ordinance with that proposed language for your consideration, and the recommendation would be approval and adoption of that text change.
Is there any questions of Mr. Meeks?
No, sir.
I'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman, let me go ahead and enter this file.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Meeks.
That's my bad.
Yeah, that's all right.
That's my bad.
Admitted as exhibit one.
We good? Mr. Meeks? We good?
We're good.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Perkins.
I thought a motion that the amendment for LDR 23-04 be accepted, amendment accepted.
Well, hold on, Mr. Commissioner Prior, go through the public comment first.
Oh, you didn't? Okay.
Yeah, I gotta check what's there.
Okay.
I'll open the floor to public comments. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there any further board discussion?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I want you to adopt a resolution of LDR 23-04.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins to adopt, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. At 5:30 PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider special permit request number SP-23-08-01 by Matanya S. John, PA, is that correct, Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Authorized agent property owners Dennis Martin and Alfred Linton to be granted a special permit under section 14.111 of the Swanee County Land Development Regulations for an essential service. 199 feet monopole communications tower and associated equipment on property zone environmentally sensi-- excuse me, environmentally sensitive. Mr. Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, Land Development Regulations refer to communication towers as essential services, and by that they are permitted in every zoning district. Most recent knowledge, I think most of the applications that the board has had before them for consideration, has been located in agricultural one zoning district. This property, as you note, is located in an environmentally sensitive two zoning district. Really, the only difference between the A1 and the ESA two zoning district is that the portions of the property is located within the 100-year floodplain. So the request has been made to construct a 199-foot telecommunication tower and associated equipment on this property. If the request is approved, any electrical service that would be there would be required to be elevated above the 100-year floodplain, and that would be ensured through the permitting process, and we would have elevation information submitted to us from the surveyor on that project, ensuring that that service is at least, it can be an inch above the 100-year floodplain, as long as it's above. The request is for a piece of property that is located off of River Road, immediately north of the Shady Grove Baptist Church, if you're familiar with that general area. The property is known as lot number 26 of the replat of lot 26 and 27 of the Antlers subdivision. That was around about maybe a year ago, or within the past six months, that the board had adopted and approved the revision of that plat because they had to realign those lot lines for the Antlers subdivision for lots 26 and 27. Those lots are 10 acres in size. They can accommodate the required setbacks for the 199-foot telecommunication tower. The applicant is, the application has been submitted, it's complete. It has all of the associated information required for the submittal, the FAA determination, and they've also shown the existing coverage without the proposed tower, and then the additional coverage that would be gained for that tower. It's really not trying to educate anybody from this board. I think we're pretty well aware where there's deficiencies in coverage throughout our county, and this one is one of those areas. So you have a resolution with your application, you have the supporting documentation that's been submitted with that. The resolution is written for approval. If the board so chooses to approve the request, then they would adopt the resolution approving such. I do know that there is a member here that is representing the owners of the property, which is Dennis Martin and Alfred Linton, and they can provide additional information if the board so chooses, or if you have any questions of me, I'll answer them at this time. If not, I would enter this file to the record as well.
Is there any questions for Mr. Meeks?
File's admitted as A.
No, sir. Seeing none, I'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak?
Good evening, I'm Matt Tenaya-John.
Can you, I'm sorry, before we get started, can you raise your right hand and be sworn in?
Do you swear firm testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Matt Tenaya-John, 935 Main Street, Suite C4, Safety Harbor, Florida, 34695. I am the agent of record for the property owners and for One Source Towers Two, as well as Verizon Wireless. The staff are, Mr. Meeks summarized the application pretty good. It's gonna be a monopole style communication tower, meaning that there's no guy wires. It's also gonna be completely dark at night. It's for Verizon. You have the coverage maps in your record, so with that, I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman. Excuse me.
I have one question for her.
Ma'am. Mr. Scott has a question.
You said be completely dark at night, with no red light or anything at night?
Yes, sir. Matt Tenaya-John again.
Is there a requirement for one at a certain height?
I would, you met all the FAA requirements for lighting?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
We went over, if we were 200 feet or taller, we would be required to have a red top beacon and steady burning side beacons.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close. I'm sorry. Name and address. And raise your, I'm sorry, raise your right hand and be sworn.
Do you swear firm testimony you're giving this cause to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. See Fontana, 144, 21181, 144th Street, Live Oak. As far as towers are concerned, I just want to be understood in the record that there, it does not, as was said, it's like a year ago, last time we put a tower up, that it isn't required to have an environmental impact statement, but the county should consider the environmental impact of any transmitting device that could cause radiation at all. Because the way you keep, the way you prevent cancer is you keep radiation as low as possible. So you want to be aware of what are the power outputs of it, what are the R squared losses when it reaches that property line, who's around it, are there children around it, things like that. None of those studies seem to be done when we put up towers or anything like that. I just want you to consider that. If you had this over a schoolyard, it could be a problem. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a response to that?
Matt Tenaya-John again for the record, and I would like to bring the board's attention to the Telecom Act of 1996, specifically codified at 47 U.S.C. Section 332, and I'll be entering a copy of the text into the record.
Admitted as B.
And that prohibits local jurisdictions from regulating communication towers on the basis of environmental effects of RF emissions, and that's because these towers are very low-power. Essentially, we're reusing FM transmission from TVs. That light you have over your head basically gives you more energy than a cell tower does. So it's regulated by the FAA, or the FCC. My apologies, Verizon maintains their network in compliance with FCC safety regulations. And who do I present my exhibit to?
Clerk, I'm sorry, the clerk. Thank you.
I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am. Could you raise your right hand? Thank you.
Do you swear firm testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Merle Owens. My address is 8432 97th Road, Live Oak. I have a question for the lady. This tower they're talking about putting up, how often will, what do you call it? How often will, once it get put up in the area, how often would they check?
Maintaining?
Yes, the maintaining of it and seeing about the residents, if there's any type of illnesses or anything in that area.
Yes, ma'am. Do you know more about that than I do?
Good evening, Matt Tenaya-John again, and basically, these towers are checked out monthly by each carrier. They go in and check their own equipment, so it's one trip per carrier per month. A technician comes and checks it out. They also remotely monitor them as they go along.
And she asked about, is there any notifying of the residents around the tower, or is there any communication with those residents? I mean, that wasn't her question, I think.
So as far as that goes, there was the public hearing notice. On an ongoing basis, the FCC doesn't have a mechanism for that because the FCC directly monitors and takes care of making sure the carriers comply.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there any further board discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add, I know the area, and it's, there's no service out there.
None.
None. I know half of our first responders, the fire and EMS, I'm sure have issues out there from time to time, so I think it's needed in that area, for sure.
I just wish it was in my backyard.
I hear you.
Any further, anything else from the board?
No, sir.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve special permit request number SP-23-08-01?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Item number 15, at 5:35, or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider a development agreement with Project Samoa.
Mr. Chairman, this is given over to the county attorney to handle on the agenda. This is the first of two public hearings. There's no board action necessary today. Project Samoa, the business entity that that's been signed with, I can represent to the board, has executed the agreement. However, we can't take board action until after a second public hearing. So this is the first of those two public hearings, just to announce that there's been an economic development agreement between the county and Project Samoa for development out at the catalyst site where the county will sell to the developer, or I'm sorry, the person we're entering into the economic development agreement, certain real property located in the catalyst site, approximately 30 acres at the price of $6,000 an acre. The projected revenue, the projected investment in the site is pursuant to the economic development agreement, at least $30 million, and is projected to provide at least 40 or 50 jobs during Phase 1, and that's without considering what else could happen in phase, additional phases of the project. So this is the first of those two public hearings, and I'd ask that the chair open it up for public comment, if there is any.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Is there any public comment? Any discussion by the board?
No, sir.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
There's no board action necessary.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is.
No, sir. Yeah, we'll do it next time.
That's why I ain't an attorney. Moving back to the consent agenda, item number four, approval of a letter of agreement with Vision First Advisors. I think Mr. Hancock, you want to speak on this?
Bo Hancock, Wiggins Road, Live Oak. All that, my concern is, is there any possible duplication between this agreement and the one we have with Retail Strategies? In looking through them, it looks like they're both doing some of the same things, but I don't know. He would have to talk to it.
He could answer that. Mr. Norris?
Yes, sir.
Name and address.
Retail Strategies is a retail recruitment arm that we're using to bring business to town. This is a strategic plan to work with us on the future as we continue to get appropriations and grants. Our infrastructure improvement and everything that we're doing across the board at all interchanges, we have grown to the point, and we're doing so much work in so many areas, we felt, Chairman, you've been involved in that, Mr. Scott's been involved in that, we felt it was really important to have a professional third set of eyes to come back and look at what we're doing and be sure we're on the right track, and then help identify our strengths, our weaknesses, and our opportunities to improve. So this is a way to help us get better at what we're doing, be sure we're on the right track.
And I think there's a grant.
Yes. The, we applied initially to do this program through Enterprise Florida to get a grant. The grant was approved, however, Enterprise Florida in this last session was absorbed up into DEO, which now DEO has been changed to the Department of Commerce, so there is no DEO, but through the help of Ms. Diane and reaching out to some of our folks, Ms. Michelle Bowlin at Enterprise Florida, they agreed to honor the grant, so yeah, $25,000 out of the cost of this strategic plan will be covered by grant money, and the check has already been received.
Thank you, sir.
So. Thank you.
Mr. Hancock, does that answer some of your questions? Yes, to Mr. Hancock.
Wayne Hancock, 11883 93rd Road, Live Oak. I'm just curious of how much of our taxpayer money we're gonna spend to make sure we're doing things correctly. We already have a $95,000 commitment to the other company, to strategic planning, and now we're gonna spend another 32, 5.
95 on, I'm sorry, Mr. Hancock, 95 on which, which one?
Retail Strategies. Well, that's part of what they do, strategic planning. That's what it says in their agreement. We signed their agreement. Well, we can dance all night long. I'm just trying to make the point that we're spending money, taxpayers' money, and we're spending it well. It appears, when you look at both contracts, that they do duplicate each other.
They can, if that's what we're doing to do. What we're doing, these gentlemen who are in the meeting, Mr. Scott, Mr. White, with Retail Strategies just this past week, when we talked about our plan and what we're doing in the businesses that we're recruiting, they are not doing the same thing that this is doing. They are not looking at water infrastructure, they are not looking at wastewater infrastructure, gas infrastructure, they're not looking at interchanges in the development of a property there, they are recruiting retail businesses for us. That's what we have to do.
I'll answer your question.
I just read what's in black and white, and it appears like we're duplicating.
No, no, I'm glad, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you asked. I mean, that, most people don't know, and they are doing two different things to attract the same business, but one has a job here and one has a job here. I think that's what Mr. Norris is saying.
I'm not being clear on that. The part they're looking at was their planning on the retail site, including their technology. What we're doing with this is we're doing, we're looking at workforce, we're looking at infrastructure, we're looking at property acquisition. Two separate pieces, they're set up completely differently, so what we're asking these people to do.
I guess I get confused because I just read the contract, and it looks like it's the same.
Overlapping, appears, yeah.
But if you're giving it a different direction, that should be in the contract, not, this is what we're telling them. Why is that not in the contract? I'm just trying to narrow things down to that we don't spend money.
Please speak into the mic, Mr. Chairman.
I'm just trying to narrow things down, that we're not spending money foolishly.
Well, I believe we're spending money foolishly. I will go ahead.
Okay. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, do we have an approval of letter of agreement with Vision First Advisors? Do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Mobley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That's all on consent, right, guys?
I think so, yes.
Proclamations and presentations, Mr. Bailey.
Not sure how they made it in the proclamations section.
It's just what it says on my thing here. I'm just reading.
If you want one, I can give you one. Clear Swanee County days. I will give you an update on what NFPS has been working on since our last update. Just continuation on Lightman and Carter down in Branford, it's still under construction. Southwest 80th, 139 is in advertisement, due to do back August the 18th on that project there. Swanee 76th, out here west of town, we've met with the power companies out there, FPL and Swanee Valley Electric. Working with FPL, they're gonna need three easements for whole gang that they have out there for their facilities. They're working on their line work, so we're coordinating all that. We've got maintenance maps here for Mr. Scott to give to him for the project. Plans are moving 90%. Our planned delivery to the county is in September, first of October, as originally indicated, and we're still on target for that, so we're moving that project ahead. Express Street in Branford, we received permit for that project, and we've also received authorization from DOT to go out to bid on that project, so bid documents are ready, certifications and advertisements are ready. So with the board's approval, we'll submit that to Mr. Scott's office for bidding. Greenway Trail, we're working on the bid documents, complete that. We've met with DOT last week. All their action items have been completed and submitted back to DOT, so we're waiting on their authorization to go out and bid on the Greenway Trail. 68 Terrace, we've been working with Mr. Norris and his staff on the improvements we're talking about doing there. We're looking at the original option, putting in the curb and gutter section, as we presented to the board a while back. That'll give us a three lane. We've also been coordinating with DOT on some of that work that they're doing out on 129 as well.
Mr. Bailey. On the Greenway Trail, I think I know, but with the railroad in Duke, all of that, all the legalities are signed, sealed, and delivered, done?
Yes.
Okay. I thought I had heard that they were, but...
So all that, you know, at one point, we thought we might have to pull all that, all that's been worked out, so we're good.
And executed.
Yes, sir.
Good.
So, switch to utilities or non-road related projects. Fire station, the plans are at the county as far as the structure itself, for a final review from the county's perspective on that. We're not doing anything site, we're waiting on the board to tell us where you want to put that fire station at, so once we get to that...
I'm working on it.
We can, we'll work on that part of it. We have been having continued coordination back on 68 Street with the city of Live Oak. I know, you may not be aware, but the city has a lift station that's out there in front of Walmart. They were looking to do some upgrades to that. We had the lift station that the county was planning to construct on 68. We did have some meetings to discuss how all that would work in the future. And our office, we're actively working on some of the private owners. And our office, we're actively working with some of the private owners out there as far as some of their improvements. Right now, our last conversation with the city's engineer is we think, at present, we want to turn the lift station at 68 Street into a master station for that area, and then they can take the money they were going to put on upgrading the one in front of Walmart, we can divert those flows into that lift station, and then they can help upgrade that station to a bigger lift station down on 68 Street. And then that will set us up to be able to address sewage flows from the other vacant properties that are behind those first tier properties that are on 129. So that will set us up for the future there. We've talked about some of the other corridors in there, the old railroad corridor that does give us an avenue to get under I-10, as both a utility corridor and a transportation corridor in the future to be able to have a, a parallel route to 129 for development north of, north of the interstate. So we're working with, continuing to work with the city. That's been a great relationship we've been working with, so I think that's been, been good for both the county and the city there. CV building, those are under review by the county staff. We did get markups and answer some questions from Ms. Allen at the extension office last week, so we continue to coordinate that. The Canrid 137 utility extension, we received a permit back from DEP at the end of last week. The contractor was supposed to have started that work this week to put that in. The Catalyst Water Main Extension, as I told you previously, we did receive that DEP permit. The FJ's kind of gone silent on us, so we're trying to dig them out of the, whatever hole they've gone into to get our final approval from them. So once we get that, we're ready to send that out to bid for that work there. I did talk to Mr. Scott before the meeting and talk to Mr. Norris. We do still need to get that easement right away from Rexon for that connection there. And then we'll also need to update the developer's agreement between Project Wave and the county because when they redid their site, that changed that alignment in there, so that legal description will have to be amended. That was in the original agreement. And there's some other site design or site-related construction specifics that I was talking on about that we need to include in there as well. So we'll be coordinating that to make sure that goes through. As far as Project Wave is go, we did receive, we did a two-stage permit for those guys to, so they go ahead and start breaking ground. We also received that last week for them to be able to start their dirt work out there. They can't build concrete or asphalt, but they can start moving dirt. And then by the time they get that done, we should have the rest of their permitting done for them to be able to continue on with that work there. So that's been, been good for Project Wave. The Catalyst Master Plan, we're continuing to work on that. We did have a, a meeting with, with staff on that as well, talking about some transportation elements for it and the utility elements. At the next meeting, we're planning on bringing you a map to kind of show you how that's kind of starting to kind of lay out as far as how those transportation improvements we anticipate doing for that area, along with the utilities and how they'll be running in that. A lot of times, our utilities are run based on where our transportation corridors are, so we want to get all that kind of laid out and help us to find how we can run our utilities as well. So that's all I have. May I have something for us?
Good. Anybody else have any questions, Mr. Bailey?
Yes, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Appreciate your time.
I will say, Mr. Chairman, while they're going back to sit down, they met me and Mr. Scott out on 76th Street, that project out there, and I just appreciate all the help they've given us and advice and what their, their role is in that.
Are there any staff items? I'm sorry, constitutional officer items, first. Come to the nursery and pull some weeds, we can straighten it out for you.
Chairman Commissioners, I was notified early this week, the agreement that we had passed last board meeting, the COPCN for RG Ambulance Service doing Business of Century, they didn't communicate to me prior to the meeting that the effective date needed to be a certain date for them. RG Ambulance doesn't take over until September 14th. I spoke with our county attorney and he said that the, the agreement needed to be re-approved with a new effective date. I have copies of that and apologize that I just found out about this yesterday, I wasn't able to get it on the agenda, but they're in a time crunch because they're trying to file applications with the state to get their licensing done to be able to take over legally. So I just, I just need an approval from you guys on, it's the exact same agreement, just changing the effective date from last meeting's date to September 14th.
Have you got a copy of it? Is this kosher with you, Mr. Morrison?
It is, your honor. I'm still in court mode, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hale.
Chief, is the same exact agreement, just changing the date?
Yeah, it's the exact same agreement. The only difference, it was agreement 2377 that we approved last board meeting. It's identical, nothing, no changes with the exception of the effective date changes from, what was it, 12th to 9/14/23, just because their RG Ambulance Service doesn't take over their company until the 14th, and it needed to state that to be legal with the state.
And Chief Hand, just to make a clear record, and are you representing to the board? You've spoken to the other side of this agreement and they're not going to sign it, so that way we're not going to have two competing agreements out there?
That's correct. This will go, just like with this, these signatures, they'll accept it as, as approved by our board, granting them the COPCN.
There'll be two different, for purposes of our records, there'll be two different Swanee County agreement numbers because we did ratify it, but the previous one will be null and void because there will be no execution on the other side.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
None. I have a motion to approve.
Is that moved?
Motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Chief Hand. Ms. Betty.
Mr. Chairman, Board, Community, thank you for the opportunity to come to you with some news this, this evening. In 2019, some of you may remember, but a lot of you may not, the existing board gave permission to apply for a construction grant with the state of Florida, and Swanee County and Madison County allowed me to make application for that. Well, this past week, I received news that both the projects have been approved. The Branford project will be a renovation project of the existing library, and the Greenville and Madison Library will be a new building. I will receive additional information with regards to grant agreements, so I'll be bringing that back to you. I'm not asking for action tonight, this is just to inform you that they have been approved. And just to give you a little information, for those of you who may not know, we are a county that does not have to match. We requested $500,000 and they have approved of that, so just wanted to let you know that.
Is that for each location, Ms. Betty, or is that?
Each location.
Each location, or do you mean?
Each, each application.
Could you pull that mic a little closer, Ms. Betty? Thank you.
Each location is separate, separate and independent of each other, but all of the same system.
That's great.
Good news.
So it's $500,000 for each place.
That's a great deal. Thank you. Appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you, Ms. Betty.
Yes, we have to announce that on the.
Any other staff?
Finish the big case.
Yes, ma'am. Is there any other staff items at this time? Commissioner items, anybody have anything? I have one thing, Mr. Norris.
Go ahead.
Which Norris, would you come up for just a minute? Well, I just want to take time to acknowledge, Mr. Norris has been appointed to the Florida Economic Development Council, is that right, Mr. Norris, am I saying it right?
Yes, sir.
And recognize, Mr. Norris, he will be the North Central Florida Regional Director, and that's for the State Economic Development Council. So that's a pretty big deal for Swanee County, as well as your own NFEDP, which is the other one. So now he's on the state one as well, so I just wanted to bring him up and congratulate him.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Joe.
And when we're there, it's Swanee County sitting on that board, right?
That's correct.
So it's not Jimmy there, it's Swanee County, so, but I do appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, we appreciate what you do.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Land.
You reckon that board's prepared for his long-winded speeches?
Well, they better get ready.
I have one thing, too.
Okay, Commissioner Mobley.
Well, I had gotten a few phone calls as far as, since we had talked last about the fire deal, and I'd like to readdress the fire assessment. I spoke with the county attorney, and it's not set in stone during the budget process, but I'd like to talk about it and bring it back up, so just.
What, what is it you got in mind?
About bringing back the $10 on the fire, since we didn't have our budget booked at the time when that come about, now that we've got to look at it, I've gotten a few phone calls from people in my district, so we could during the budget workshop, we did bring it back, talk about it.
What are you, I mean, what are, what is it specific you want to discuss?
I want to see about trying to bring back the $10.
Adding some more to it, or?
No, I want to take the $10 back.
And Commissioner Mobley asked me about it earlier as to whether or not it could be readdressed, and the answer is just simply yes until the finalized budget is done. It's simply that, obviously during the workshop, nor, no action can be taken, so, but since the final fire budget hasn't been set and the final assessment hasn't been set, then it can be addressed.
Well, there you go.
Uh-huh.
So let's hear it.
I'm, I'm good with the $10, I mean, I'd, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
No, come, sorry, Chris, right.
I'm, I'm good with it, I mean, it hasn't been changed in a long time. I've been on this board a while, and, you know, when we had to do it, we had to do more than $10, and I like small increments better than larger ones, and I just don't want to see us get caught having to do something bigger or worse next year, would be my only comment on it.
Commissioner Land, did you have anything?
Caught me off guard.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I think the records shows that I voted against a $10 increase in, in our first meeting, and, and, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm still against it. I think that by getting out of the transfers before we raise taxes on the citizens, we're no longer doing those or will not be next budget cycle, so I, that was one of my main reasons I'm voting against it, was to see what getting out of that business did, did to our budget revenue and, and expenses, so I voted against it at the time, and, I mean, I, I'm, I'm still against, against that particular increase.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes, sir, I'm the one that actually did the motion for it, to give it $10. And if you recall, also that I mentioned about the $700,000 that we do have, that was grant money that was given to the county. So I was asking if you don't want to oppose a $10 assessment on, on the citizen, I'd say we will to look into that $700,000 we got from the county for physically constrained counties, and it's, it's not, no restriction to it, we can take that funds and, to fund the, make the assessment for this year, so to relieve the, the, the citizens so they want to pay an assessment, we can take it from that $700,000 and pay you fire assessment and garbage assessment. Now, that, that's an option we can use if there's, there's a problem and not want to, you know, assess the county another $10. Now, there was a Baker back there, he was aware of that $700,000 that we do have, but it's not restricted money, we can use that funds.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
I, I, I would agree with everything Commissioner Perkins stated. I mean, if you do the math, I, I believe our, our, our number of units is going to come in around 17,000, and at $10, I just did quick math, you're talking about roughly 170. So with what Commissioner Perkins said, with 700 unexpected in the kitty, so to speak, I mean, should the department have a shortfall, the revenue shouldn't be there to cover that.
Is it to where we can make a motion on that?
Commissioner.
So I think the way it would have to be done is there would be, to be a motion to rescind the $10 assessment, that's, so right now, it hasn't been, it hasn't been given over to the tax collector for assessment, which is why it can be, but in, in the meantime, it stands approved, so there would.
Make a motion to rescind it?
So you need to, there would need to be a motion and a second to rescind the increase in the assessment, and then that would have to, and then there would have to be a, at least three to vote to do so.
I'd like to make that motion. If you, Mr. Chairman, if you don't make it.
Commissioner.
That money they're talking about, could Mr. Baker get up and explain that for the people's sake just a little bit better? I mean, I, it says it's restricted.
Okay.
Mr. Baker, would you mind?
I think Eric, Eric is here also, he, he's aware of it.
Mr. Chairman, while he's coming up, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Chad reminded me that we have a, a deadline, our notices, legal notice is going out to let the citizens be aware of those increases or not, and what the figure will be, and I don't think we're going to meet that threshold if we make a change.
Oh, you don't think we are?
Pardon?
You're saying we don't think we will?
We, we would not make the, make the, it has to be done by the 15th.
Mr. Baker, you're here to tell us if we can subsidize the fire department out of the $700,000 Mr. Perkins is talking about?
The, it's the funds that Mr. Perkins are talking about are, are the funds that were given to us because we were a physically constrained county, and it's where the, as such, it's where that we were given an additional amount that we were not expecting. So it's where, so, so that, that's where those funds are from. So it's, 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 it's funds that, that a lot of the small counties received, and the, the change was due to the, whenever the state went in and did their, their calculations in their original amount, it did not have enough to fund the, the physically constrained counties originally, and they had to do a legislative, I guess, bill in order to, to make these funds available. So, so, so these are funds that were appropriated whenever they did there.
Mr. Chairman, we're having a hard time here.
I'm sorry.
You got a hold on, Mr. Baker?
I had the thing up at my mouth, but it's where, I, it's where that these are, are funds that were given to the small counties. When, from what I understand, whenever they did their original assessments to, to see what, what was going to be there, it's the amount, and, and looking at all the, all the physically constrained counties, the, the amount was not adequate to cover all those, all those costs. So, so that's where they had to do modifications in order to take it and come up with the, it's the additional amount, and so, so these were additional amounts that they paid extra that we were not originally counting on, so.
Thank you, sir.
Is that correct, Keith? Okay. And I can't, it was just over $700,000?
Seven hundred and five, I think, that's what the number was. Thank you.
Back to Scott.
Sorry. Any other, Mr. Mobley?
I made the motion. Well, Mr. Scott's got a.
Mr. Scott, finish up your comment on the deadline.
Chad knows the debt, the details, but basically we have to send advertisement out to the citizens by the 15th, and we would not make that change if something changed in that. and we would not make that change if something changed in that information. Has to be a legal advertisement also by the 15th.
Could you just come up here, Chad, so everybody can hear?
I know he's always excited about going to the mic, so...
Okay, so, the assessments are outlined, the Neighbors and Giblin gives us a schedule, and we have followed it based on their timeline. So, at this point, it's set and has to be sent out for notices to any new residential unit or new property with residential assessments that would be on it. They have to be noticed of the assessment rate that you've already approved. And then, we also have to put out that same information into a local advertisement in the paper. And that all has to be done by the 15th. You don't...
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
Does it have to be, I mean, would our website qualify? It has to be in a legal print?
Legal print.
And you don't think we could do that in 14 days? Today's the first. Is it, I'm just asking, is the deadline because of the paper won't accept the...
No, well, it's that, and then it's also the notices that have to go out. That deadline is the 15th. So, you would have to change whatever you decide tonight, then you would have to have an emergency meeting to adopt what you've changed to. And we would have to send all the paperwork back to Neighbors and Giblin.
I understand.
Thank you, sir.
Sounds like the ship might have sailed.
Sounds like it.
You asked, it can be done, it just, because it hasn't been certified by the tax collector to go out, doesn't mean that we're not going to run into a lot of practical problems of being a small county.
Commissioner Mobley, do you still make a motion?
I'll still make the motion, I'm just looking...
Hold on a second. I mean, I'm against the $10 increase, and from what I'm hearing, there's more support there. But, in saying that, what kind of technicalities are we going to face, county attorney? By, I mean, I understand what Mr. Wainwright's saying, too, and I don't disagree with anything he said.
Nor do I. It was just, in terms of drop dead dates, the true drop dead date from when I was looking into it, when Commissioner Mobley asked me, was the September 25th, which is our, because the way the assessments ultimately are going to get done is there's going to be a special fire certification through the tax collector. And I don't disagree with anything about Neighbors Giblin said about when everything needs to be published by, but that's when it's going to get certified, is by the September 25th date. I certainly think that those notices are, the timeline set out in those notices to get published are correct. But, before the tax rolls are done, is before the tax rolls are done.
So, I guess, Mr. Wainwright, if we had to have a special call meeting to expedite the process, I mean, we got budget workshops tomorrow, and...
It'll be Thursday.
Thursday, we would all be together, would that be enough time to do a public notice for a special call meeting?
The question is whether or not it's reasonable notice. If you wanted to put out 48 hours notice, that's just a question of, you know...
I'm just, I'm just asking.
I would defer to the board on that, as to whether or not you think that's reasonable.
Good job, attorney!
That is what I do.
He ain't saving you bacon there, boys!
Well, I mean, I'd like to exhaust all options in trying to save taxpayer, you know, some money, but there again, I don't want to, the ship sailed, the ship sailed.
And just so, Mr. Chairman, just back to the money, which it's, I don't know what that money was, or I didn't know we had received it, I didn't know it was unrestricted money. And just so we all know, you mentioned Commissioner Land taking it out there. Are we talking about taking the $10 out of that and putting it in there? Or just having it as a emergency fund and fund it if need be?
My interpretation of, I mean, because, yeah, we just got our budget book, so we'll start budget workshops tomorrow, so at that time, we could figure out, hey, do we want to fund what would have been the assessment? Would the, take 170 roughly out of that, and include additional revenue to the fire EMS budget? Or strictly fire, because I don't think it's a fire assessment. But, or do we hold it, hold it in contingency, knowing that it's there should something arise and that department need it? Either or, we could discuss that tomorrow.
Just don't let it be part of the motion we're trying to do here, just rescind the $10, and we'll discuss that at our meeting.
How to make up the shortfall later tomorrow, that was kind of my thoughts. I'm just, I'm one guy.
If we can do it, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, as long as we got something to cover.
Before we get down this road, too, I just need an answer, can it be done, or can it not be done?
Chad, let me ask you, for purposes of the notices, have those been published yet?
They were, they're being prepared now for two go out by 15.
So, if an action was taken by day after tomorrow...
I'm going to have to change the date.
It could be changed. Okay.
I mean, I just follow the timeline.
Oh, I understand completely. I was asked if it can, I didn't, wasn't asked if it was...
Look, what I don't want to happen here is to get in the middle of something. I'm fine with taking the $10 away, that's not an issue for me. We've already approved the $10, and I just don't want to get in the middle of something here and create a real mess over this assessment. So, I'm fine with whatever the board wants to do. If you want to make a motion, we'll carry it through. I just, I don't know how this turns out, and I don't seem to have some real definite answers here as to what's going to happen. So, I'll just leave it at that, if you want to make a motion. Mr. Clyde, can you come up here?
Clyde Fleming, 206 Lewis Avenue Southwest, LaBonne, Florida. Two weeks ago, I think I made the same statement, and I'm going to hold on to what I said. Taxes, we don't have to pay taxes. But to dumb down and not to support our fire assessment, which has already been made. I have a mom, she's 87 years old, just got out of hospital. I said this two weeks ago. She pays hers, and I have a lot of family that's elderly, that pay theirs. So, I don't think $10 is going to hurt us by no means. I'm just being upfront, I don't think $10 hurt us. I think we should stick with what we got. When these first responders go out, they need automobiles, they need equipment. I've seen it happen, I did it for 24 years and two months. And again, I'm going to say let it stay right where it's at, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would urge you to leave it alone. This is $10 increase per year. Nobody ever mentions the term, it's a year. Dead gum it, folks, all of the taxpayers that pay, and I'm one of them. I don't go to Starbucks, but don't go to Starbucks one day. You pay your debt increase for the year. Don't start monkeying with it now. You don't know what you're going to get into later on. If you miss a deadline or something else, you screw up that, then you got to deal with that issue. Don't create any more problems for yourselves, is what I'm saying. Leave it alone, you've already decided, it's been discussed. I don't want my taxes going up, but they will. It's part of living. Costs are going up for everything. Gas is going up again. And when you start paying for diesel, it gets real expensive. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clever, name and address for the record.
Moses Clever, 1458102, Second Path. I'll just continue where I left off last time I was up here on this subject. The concept that ain't been discussed today is that tightening up and living or working within your means. You know, I see extravagance going on. I was, I pointed out last time, this is poor county, and it is. Actually, Mr. Fleming, he disagreed with that, so I went and did some research. We are, we're below the state average. And is the $10 literally going to hurt anyone? I don't think anybody in this room really knows. I think we're all living with luxury problems. But I know some folks out there that are struggling, all right? I've mentioned that many times, I've referred to a dozen eggs. My concern personally, the $10 ain't affecting me in any way. But personally, the principle of just, let's just go up. Originally, I believe the ask was $45, okay? If I'm not wrong. And I know for sure the ask officially was $25, all right? Again, I did, with all the fuzzy math numbers I could, I come up with the maximum by what was projected, $6.81, if I recall correctly, was needed to meet that. And the asker was saying, well, we'll go $25, so I don't have to ask again so soon. But I, I've heard only very little about maybe some fuel cost reduction since the transfers have reduced or been eliminated. But, you know, I, what is it, a $10 million budget? If $170,000 can't be tightened up within a $10 million budget, something's wrong, you know? I don't work on a $10 million budget, you know? And, but I know that percentage-wise, I could reduce that down. I, I hear from Mr. Wainwright that we got till the 15th to meet them deadlines. The increase has not been sent out, so there's time. 10 days, you know, whatever. I plead with y'all to reverse that set of principle. We trying to make changes in this county and go in a different direction than we've been going the last 12 years. I think if y'all continue with this and just appease, ask after ask, never say no, I think y'all are not setting a good precedence. And y'all are just going along with it, just little by little, getting right back to where we were. And, you know, y'all got an opportunity to make a difference, I ask you start right here.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mobley, Commissioner Mobley.
Well, I'm getting phone calls from the people who can afford it, and know they have the gas money to come up here and talk about it. So, I'm here to speak for them, and my motion still stands. I'd like to take it, right?
We have a motion by Commissioner Mobley to rescind the $10 assessment on the fire protection. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
For the record, I was absent last week, I was out of town, so I missed that vote. But four weeks ago, I was here, and I did vote against it, it passed 4 to 1, I guess, on the preliminary, if you will. So, that leaves me no choice but to second Mr. Mobley's motion.
I have a motion and a second to reduce the $10 fire assessment that was previously approved. Well, I guess you just need to rescind on that right now?
Yeah, just to rescind the increase, to leave the previous rate in stack.
The previousest.
Can I ask a question real quick? Just real quick, just wondering on the $10, and I don't know if Chad knows this, but what is it called? If this is the print, I'm just, I know it ain't going to cost $170,000, but, I mean, what are we costing ourselves having it? I know, Mr. Adam, maybe you know, what are we going to cost the county running back and doing this and changing this? I just don't know what it would, what that dollar amount looks like. I mean, I'm, if we can save the folks $10, I want to save them $10. But if we're going to put ourselves in a bind like Commissioner Land was saying, and Chad's saying, what is that going to cost us? What, I mean, it's still taxpayer money we're spending to turn this around, send it back to them, ask Neighbors and Giblin again, have our attorney do it. I just don't know what that looks like, I guess is what I'm asking.
Well, what I got on the table right now is a motion and a second to rescind it. All in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign? 3 to 2 to rescind the previous motion for the $10 assessment.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
Commissioner Perkins?
Yeah, I don't have, you know, if we're going to rescind that, the same money for the people are, I have a problem with that. If we're going to take then, look into using that money from the, the money we're giving from the state to taking fund the assessment, you know, as I was foreseen, to save them money, the $10, to relieve the, the county have to pay, what the people have to pay that $10 assessment.
Maybe that's how the motion should have been made, is if we can do it without running into...
Well, the money is not, is not restricted, so it's at will, you can use that money to fund a part of it, yeah.
I get, Mr. Adam, I guess what I'm asking is maybe, and maybe this is how the motion would set well with probably Mr. Perkins, if he rescinded the $10 and we didn't run into any issues, and we were, if needed, would cover that $10 with the extra money that Mr. Baker was talking about, that would be fine. But if there's an issue, then we have to leave it like it is, I mean...
We're talking about two separate things, respectively. So, the question is, there's a very direct question, which is, should there be an additional $10 increase to the fire assessment? Yea or nay? At first, it was a yea, and we passed it, and Chad and the other folks at the county were working towards doing all the formalities that go with that. We have thrown a monkey wrench in it, but it's not, again, that's, when Commissioner Mobley asked me, can it be rescinded? The answer is, yes, it can. The ship hadn't completely sailed yet. Now, the issue that's being brought up, that's an entirely separate issue, and that would, for example, that $10 assessment would have to be used for fire, because that's what the assessment is for. The point that Commissioner Mobley's bringing up about the use of unrestricted funds in GR, that's for y'all to determine independently in the budget workshop process. And how this board chooses to make up for a budget shortfall is up to the discretion of the board, but that's a wholly separate question from ought there or ought there not be a $10 increase to the assessment. So, the only thing that I would add is just ask that we publish a meeting for probably 1 o'clock on, what, Thursday? To do it formally, because we have to have a second meeting.
So, there's no further action needed?
I don't believe so tonight, sir.
Well, and I just want to explain that I'm kind of on Commissioner Land's deal. I think we can handle it during the budget workshop, and we could allocate some money to the side, and if Chief Hand needs it in the end, then he'll, he can come before the board and ask for it. So, he won't be left out either, so that's what's my thing on it, so...
And for the record, Mr. Chairman, I'm all good with all that, I guess I'm just concerned about the timeline that's been laid out.
Well, that's kind of my concern as well, but I think it can be done.
That's the only reason I voted, just to keep it, because I don't want us to get in any kind of legality issue with that.
Yes, likewise here, they want to, you know, none delays is going to cause them more problem. They have a train wreck trying to convert this over, that's why I was thinking too, the well.
I think I heard enough, I heard enough to think that it can probably get done. It won't be the first time I've been wrong in my life, and I'm sure it probably won't be the last. So, we're going to just go with what we got. We got to move on.
Let's go.
Okay.
Item number 17, discuss with possible board action redistricting the districts of the Commissioners of the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners. Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for those who have a copy of the agenda in front of them, or are looking at it electronically, it may be helpful to follow along. We're on page number 142 of the agenda. Just to fill in the background for the benefit of the audience, or those who may be watching at home, the question that, here's the current situation, and if we look at the current districts in the agenda, I know that the board has maps in front of you all, but if you look at the agenda, so that way we can look at the current population differential between the districts. As we've discussed before, after that judgment was entered in 1985, and after the, this board redistricted in 1992, it set out the districts as they currently exist. We haven't redistricted since then pursuant to the one person, one vote, equal protection standard laid out by the United States Supreme... standard laid out by the United States Supreme Court. A population differential, that is the difference between, in population, between your highest population county and your lowest populated county, or not county, I'm sorry, district ought not be more than 15% or really kind of can't at 15 or 16% and a differential of 10 or less is considered acceptable. Today, as we sit here, the differential is 67.02 points, so that is well out of compliance. And to put the equal protection issue and make that easy for everybody to understand, as we sit here today, the population of District 2 pursuant to the 2020 census is 5,386 and the population of District 5 is 10,948, or twice as many people. Said another way, in the context of equal protection and for purposes of voting, a voter in District 5 has half the electoral representation as a voter in District 2. That's where we get that 70% differential. So the question before the board is, we're going to need to do two things. First, whether or not to redistrict to cure that 70, nearly 70% differential as it currently exists. And that also would be required under, respectfully, the Florida Constitution, Article 8, Section 1(c), which requires looking at the population after each census as to whether or not the different districts need to be redistricted in order to create equal populations as nearly as practicable. And also Florida Statute 1.24, 124.013, which again, requires this board every 10 years after each census to look at its districts to see if the populations need to be put, for lack of a better phrase, back into whack. So based upon that, it's my recommendation that this board vote, I'm asking this board to have a motion and a second to authorize redistricting, to reset the county lines in order to cure the current population differential. So after the, there's a vote on that, Mr. Chairman, if the board does vote to redistrict, we can go through the alternatives presented by Mr. Spitzer, but for present purposes, I'm asking the board to, and it's my recommendation, that the board vote to redistrict.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Is there any questions of Mr. Morrison on the board? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Mr. Udell, I think you had a paper here. Now, let me be clear, we are talking about approving or not approving redistricting at this time. We're not approving a map at this time.
Yes, I understand that. Name, address, first?
Yes, sir, please.
Douglas M. Udell, 115 Green Avenue, Libo, Florida. I didn't come here tonight to be on the warpath, but I'm understanding that the county attorney is asking that you to vote on this rea-potionment. I would, I think I have three minutes.
Yes, sir.
And could I ask a question of other groups of people here that look like me? Could I have your seven? They have consented. Okay. I believe in 10 minutes, it won't take that long. I'd like to start with where, what is the root of this rea-potionment? I know what the results is going to be and I'll get into that a little bit later, but I'd like to find, is, what is the root of it? I asked Mr. Adams and he said he didn't know. It was just dropped in his lap. I've asked your former attorney, whom you fired, and he couldn't give me an answer. He said that folks will say he started it. My question is, did it come from the big house in Tallahassee under anti-woke? And woke means no more than being in acknowledgement of something, being aware, that's all it means. So I'm trying to find out where did this come from? Who initiated it? Rea-potionment? Because I know what it's going to do if you do this. It's going to eliminate the high possibility of persons who look like me and Mr. Perkins from sitting on this board. Going to do the same thing with the school board. I heard the county attorney, he fastened a percentage of voting strength to make a comparison, I believe, of District 2 and your district, District 5. I don't see a half a man sitting there. I see a whole man. Each district elect one person regardless of how many persons are in that district. But it doesn't make a difference as to what color they are in that district. District 2 was, was, was established from a lawsuit with the county, Board of County Commissioners and the school board, they capitulated when the suit was filed and agreed to have single male district and so black participation as far as being elected could be on either board. Now, there's some who has used the fact that Mr. Blalock got elected countywide, tried to go back to countywide in 2006 and it didn't work. It was prohibited. Well, yes, he did, but lightning do strike every nine then. In 165 years from 1858, D. 721st and Swanee County became a county, it happened within that 165 years for as a superintendent of the school, countywide voting. And for as a county commissioner, the exception of Reconstruction period, which was after the Civil War, there was a black commissioner that is a time is never talked about, Reconstruction is never mentioned. Mr. John Fields from this county, the great, great grandfather to Fields that are here now, he was the commissioner here. But once the federal troops pulled out, he wasn't allowed to take his seat in tenure by local law enforcement, as the rumor of the old folks have been passed down in, in our history due to the fact that he was black. And I can tell you, when I first got elected in 94, it was just as hostile here and in this county as it was with the Viet Cong in Vietnam, where I served as a soldier. I'm asking you to really look at what you're doing. You are eliminated under what our governor has called anti-woke, getting rid of it and means no more to be aware, as I foresaid, of anything. And, and I am aware that if you do this redistricting with 2,600 people who don't look like me in District 2, you, we as a black people of this county can kiss being elected goodbye. High probability you won't get elected and we all know it. Is that your intention? That's the question. And where did it come from? Who started? That's the question. I haven't got an answer yet. Now, I'm going to fight you if you do this. I've already called the law firm that handled this in, in 1985, Lippman out of Miami. I'm going to do whatever it takes to ensure that we can continue having black representation elected to office in this county. And what this is going to do is going to eliminate and make it extremely hard. You know it and I know it. Is that your intention?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynn.
Mr. Udell, I appreciate you coming and to answer your question, I don't know who directly it was opposed, proposed to, but I will, I will give an answer. Others may have a different answer. All that I know as far as the root of this, this has been talked about, I, I have received minutes and research minutes back to 2016, so I've only been on the board since 2020. They, they talked about it in 2016. There's minutes of that, there's minutes of it being discussed, I believe, in, in maybe 2019 and then also again in 2020 or 2021. But to give you an answer of who, where the root of this came from, it's been being discussed since before I was on the board, so.
I'm sure it has.
So I don't really have an answer, a direct answer for you.
But do you understand what the intent of this is? What it can do, what it will do?
My understanding is, is the intent of this is to follow the Florida Constitution, one person, one vote.
You already got that. You've got five districts with five people elected. That half a vote you spoke about, he said you are half a vote. Your people only got a half a vote, they got a full vote. They elected you and you're not a half a man, nor are you two people. You one person. You already got what you trying to achieve with fairness for people of my persuasion to be elected. When you change this, you're going to eliminate the fairness. Did you pledge allegiance to the flag? I stepped out. He said justice for all. Where is the justice in this, gentlemen? Where is the justice? When you create a situation that is going to take black people out of the equation as far as being representatives, elected officials? Where is the justice?
Mr. Udell, I've given you a little bit more than what you asked for.
More than 10 minutes?
Yes, sir.
Well, time flies fast when you trying to stop something that shouldn't happen. I'll stop.
Thank you, sir.
I think there are others.
I appreciate it.
But I want you to know I will fight you.
Thank you, sir.
If you do this.
Mr. Wainwright? Name and address, please, sir.
Wesley Wainwright, 16672 129th Road, McCalpin. Mr. Udell, as, when I served as a commissioner from 2008 to 2016, I'm not sure, I can't remember the years that I served as chairman, which I think was about three years in there somewhere. It was during that time that it was brought up by then county attorney, Eric, that we needed to redistrict. The gist of it then was that District 5 was way ahead in population compared to others. We had a preliminary meeting with Glenda Williams, who was the supervisor of elections. I, I can't remember who all was there. I know the county attorney was there, myself and Glenda, and I think there was one or two others. Specifically, we addressed District 2 at that time. I, I don't know what these guys are, I don't know what your question is here, but going back to the history of the discussion of the redistricting, according to the attorney then and the discussion that was all involved, District 2 as a minority district would remain untouched. The other four districts, however, because there was such a population differential, I think there was as much as 3,000 or 4,000 difference between the least and the greatest of those other four districts.
I remember it just when I.
Okay, that, that was, that was the discussion then, timelines and things that, just some things that just came into play that kept us from pursuing it because we knew that it was quite a task to go into looking at redistricting.
That died because of my conversation then, is the same conversation I'm having now. The change District 2 is going to eliminate the possibility of white participation. You know it.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree with that, but, and that's why I'm saying that the, the gist of that initial meeting and the subsequent meetings that we had, which was only two or three, was that we would not touch District 2. I would hope that they would continue in the vein of that because just as you have stated, it's not going to be, the minority district was set up for that particular reason. Part of what the federal courts ruled on back in 80, whatever, was, I'm not as old as you are.
I know I don't have no more time, but there's one thing I'd like to say. The number of persons in your district does not give you any more additional power over your brother commissioner. It doesn't do that. You have one vote in your district, one vote, one vote, five. You all have equal power. And as a group, you have ultimate power. 10,000 in your district, five in somebody else makes no damn difference because you got the same strength on that board, each individual commissioner. Now, tell me I'm wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Udell.
Gentlemen, I apologize, I didn't address you. I was specifically answering his question, but I thought that that, being able to share that with y'all, it goes way back. This, this goes back pretty good ways, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to address, because I know that there was discussion about legal opinion, I certainly can't speak to what Attorney Air thought then or what the legal advice to the board was at that point in time. I will say now, having researched the issue very thoroughly, having consulted with other attorneys in the matter, I understand why District 2 was created the way it was, but the absolute inviolable rule is that each county in, or each district in a county must be of as equal a population as possible, as is practicable pursuant to the one person, one vote. There's not an exception for a district created pursuant to a previous lawsuit under the Voting Rights Act. So I, I, I wasn't present for those conversations, but if Mr. Air, if, if somebody were presenting that opinion today, I would tell them that I think that's an incorrect legal conclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Is there any discussion among the board?
Mr., Mr.
Commissioner Lynn.
I mean.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about you.
May I just have my three minutes?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, Commissioner Lynn.
Yes, sir.
I looked over.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. My name is Lauren Jorgensen, 9310 146th Street in Libo. I just wanted to say that I know a number of us are here because we are really concerned with the maps and with the, the decision that this board may or may not be making to move forward at this time and asking if there is a potential for a little further discussion to examine carefully what direction this county is going to go in. And I know that it won't come to us as a surprise to anyone that the Supreme Court has recently reaffirmed the importance of the Voting Rights Act. In fact, Justice Roberts himself talked about in the most recent decision about seven weeks ago, Allen versus Milligan, the, the need to consider and to make sure that minority representation is had on boards such as the county commission and the school board. In fact, Justice Roberts even said, "History did not stop in 1960." And I think that echoes a little bit the comments of Mr. Udell, that this is a county that I think it's very important, I, my husband, myself, other folks who are here feel very strongly that we don't want to see us go back in time. And if this, if this commission can defer or wait to make a decision that could have such a, a really critically negative consequence on the diversity of representation on this board, I would like to see us do that, see you do that. And Mr. Chair, I would love to hear, I apologize that I wasn't there for the workshop, I wish I could have been, but I, I wasn't and I, I feel like I'm a little late to this discussion. But can the, can the board amongst yourselves talk a little bit about how you feel about the fairness of, number one, this decision to go forward with redistricting? And number two, how fair is it going to be to the community? Because I think those are things that we voters in Swanee County would really like to hear your voices on.
Thank you.
So could you talk about that?
Sure. You can, I'll, I'll, I'll address it. You, you don't have to stand there.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
I guess I'll be the first off the bat here. As you can see, there's 10,000 people in my district. The land mass for that district is way bigger than any other district in this county. For me, it doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with race. You know, I've got a lot of, of black friends and I respect a lot of black people and it's not about that for me. It's about making it fair to the voters in my district and it's also about following the Constitution to do what I swore to take an oath to do. And so that is my position.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Perkins.
Oh, thank you. When did it start or where did it say? I mean, in previous times, did the district all have the same amount of constituents in each district? Apparently it hadn't because of where it is now. And I just wonder why, I guess, I guess the state is saying that we got to do this or is that the state's take on this? And also is that, how many of the other counties has moved forward to redistrict? Do we, are, do we have any stats on how many other counties that has already fulfilled this, I guess, this obligation to redistrict? I know that there are some cases that's pending now in court against this redistricting for the same sake of what you were saying here now, for minority concerns. um, concerns. So, I'm, I'm wondering if, how many state, how many counties that we have now, we have six or seven counties in this state, have all states, all counties have moved forward and had redistricting?
I know at the, I'm sorry, I know at the workshop, Mr. Spitzer had made mention, Mr. Morrison, if you recall, I don't, that some other counties that were doing this, he had mentioned-
Sure. Um, Columbia County's recently redistricted, Madison redistricted, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman, one other thing too, um, with respect to what the last speaker spoke about, just in terms of what the Allen decision held, and I'm looking at it right now, where, um, even in voting rights cases, it says the maps contained equal populations, uh, and then we get to a voting rights protection issue in terms of having, uh, the representation issue in terms of race come up. So, a precondition to, um, looking at whether or not you can create a majority minority district is that each district within the county have that equal population. But to answer the original question, um, it's pursuant, the Constitution requires, the Florida Constitution, that is, that each county look at its populations for purposes of being of equal population pursuant to one person, one vote, um, every, after every census. So, whether or not those counties do it and whether or not, uh, they pursue redistricting is a separate matter. But the census, the, the Constitution requires to do it at least every ten years.
So, if the Constitution required that, then, I guess in previous years, that, uh, we should have been, have also had the equal district. We wanna be now having, I know we have people move into the counties. I'm just wondering how far away were we at that time, back then, those days, we were, now we're trying to, to address it now, uh, and previously, we, we did not address it, what I'm saying.
I don't think there's, I, I don't think, I, I think everything you just said is correct. If, for example, and instead of, the, this redistricting was done in 1992, if it had been done in 2000, there would not be near the extreme of having to change the lines because, you know, that's the problem with waiting forty years, is it gets exaggerated. And that's what leads to a seventy percent population differential, which is where we're at now.
And, and, Mr. Herr-
I was just gonna say, I mean, to answer Mr. Udell's question, I'm not really a hundred percent, I, I understand why I think we're having to do this and some of the things that our attorney has told us, but, um, Mr. Udell, I'll just, I don't know if you've seen this map, but I was looking here as you were speaking, and this is, I was just looking at three B, one A compared to our original, where we are now, where we're sitting right now, and I see, just looking at Commissioner Perkins' district, the, the black percentage versus the white percentage changes about three percent either way.
Six hundred and eight people.
Yeah, but, but it ups his population to be closer to some of ours, and I think it lowers mine to be closer to his. But like for my district, for Mr. Perkins, he would take in, um, out Boys Ranch Road to, uh, Oakwood subdivision back in there, which I know I have some minority voters there and really good people. And it looks like it also goes out ninety, I would lose, uh, pat, behind you, behind your place, out to the other side of Wayne Fryer and down Gold Coast, which I have a lot of supporters there, minority supporters there as well. So, I think that helps up his overall population by not so much changing his percentages less than two or three percent, if I'm reading this right.
Commissioner Herr, can, can I stop you for just a second?
Yes, sure.
What we're considering right now is whether to redistrict or not to redistrict.
No, and I agree, I, but I want him, I want him to understand the dynamics of it. I don't think it's quite as bad, I think, maybe, as, as one would think. I don't know. And, and that's just one map, by the way. That's just one map.
God, Mr. Udell, if you wanna speak, can you please come to the mic?
Please do, please do. Because I wanna be as fair to Mr. Perkins and everyone else as well.
I've been around this whole world for almost eighty years. I've seen a whole lot of things happen under the disguise of, "We gonna make it better for you. We gonna make it equal for you. We gonna do justice for you." And if you add twenty-six hundred white people to District Two, y'all, we are finished in this county for its black representation. I don't care how you vote it, or what you do to it. That's a fact. I know how hostile it was when I first got elected. Hell, I had to come to county board and meet with my gun in my pocket secretly and made it known I shoot. They even voted up the windows at the courthouse so nobody could attack me from the back, putting merit detectors to keep so it could check everybody for rape. So, you guys, you remember that? So, now, all of a sudden, doing this here anti-woke situation, everything fine. The hell it is? It's not. And if you approve this, let somebody sue you to make you do it, and I'll be fighting them in lieu of you doing it. You don't have to do it, there's nothing, it doesn't jeopardize you any way not to do this. Doesn't jeopardize the commission in any way whatsoever. But it does eliminate black participation for its being elected, and you know it and I know it, and I'm saying it. We hadn't got to that point yet in America where everything is like it should be. We know America's not always been kind to all of her citizens, all of her children. We know the one group she's never been kind to, but we hold no ill will against America for that. We want betterment, improvement, equal justice, and reapportionment is not equal justice. It's to take us back to the days where we even had the right to vote, because our vote won't even count. That is the intention of whoever orchestrated this.
Mr. Udell.
And I'll stop.
Okay, thank you. Claude?
Thank you for letting me come up again. Clyde Fleming, 206 Lewis Avenue Southwest. I don't wanna, have no desire to make race an issue, but the way it's going is political. Mr. Udell did sixteen years, I did twelve. Wesley, thank you for, for the reminder. I was there in 2016, I got on 2010. 2016, it came up, I'm here now, but it quickly died. It came up again in 2019, and it quickly died. But now, all of a sudden, it's just pushing, and I want to ask the attorney this, is it legal? Is it constitutionally legal to do a realignment? But you, you, to me, I, I, if I'm wrong, you call me, try to call me, but you, it seemed to me that you're pushing this, pushing this thing. Is it legal?
If I'm creating the impression that I'm pushing it, it's only insofar as this is, one of the questions when I, uh, for lack of a better phrase, had an impromptu interview for the board was, uh, Commissioner Perkins asked me, "How do I keep us out of jail?" Nobody's gonna go to jail, but as we sit here today, when I joined the, when I was, when I was brought on as the attorney, redistricting was already happening. Mr. Spitzer, the expert, had already been hired. So, that, for lack of a better phrase, that die was cast. So, um, and if I'm coming across as too strong of an advocate, then I guess I apologize for that. But where there's a seventy percent differential in population, the legal jeopardy that the county is exposing itself to by not redistricting is very significant. And so, insofar as it's my job to try to steer the county out of legal jeopardy, then yes, I guess to that extent I am being a forceful advocate, and I wanna be very clear about this. What map, I don't care, um, but as to whether or not they should redistrict, my position as the attorney for the county, whose job it is to recommend steering the county clear of legal jeopardy, is yes, they should redistrict. But ultimately, I'm not voting. We've had that conversation. So, but I don't mean to come across too strongly as be forcing the issue, no, but as to whether or not this was going to be an issue, that was decided before I was even knew that this was going forward.
Well, I got drawn shoulders, so we're not coming too strong. But I, I'll tell you this, uh, so, like Mr. Udell, I, I don't wanna see this happen. And when it did come up in 2016, as Wesley said, it was one, three, four, and five. It excluded District Two. But now, District Two is coming into the play, and, and, and that's where the, I, that's where the problem is coming in at. I don't, I don't feel as if, I mean, if, if, if it's gonna create more jobs, then obviously, yeah. Is it going to do some good things for this county? I don't think so, because if you go get, go out there at District and take some out of five or four, wherever you're talking about taking them from, they might not even wanna come in District Two. So, you're actually voting on some, for some people that are not here tonight. So, I think it's a bad move. I don't agree with it. Give it some time, I think you should give it some time, as Lady said. Give it some time and think about it, pray about it, and, and see how, how you come out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Anyone else? Any other board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
I've, I've heard our county attorney speak, um, and, and he's, he is correct. The ship had, had sailed prior to him being on the board, so he, he certainly is not push, pushing this by any matter. This was being talked about before, and it was approved with Spitzer before he, he ever came on the board. And no disrespect to him, um, but I have asked other, other municipal attorneys, and, and, as Mr. Udell said, he's, he's gonna sue us. If we don't do it, we're gonna get sued by a very large group of folks, probably in District Five, for, for, for their lack of representation, um, based on the Florida Constitution. So, either way, there potentially could be litigation. The odds, if we don't do it, um, I, I believe are, are pretty strong that, that we would lose. I, I've heard Mr. Fleming say a hundred times, Mr. Fleming, that, I mean, we, he, you gotta go with your county attorney. If your county attorney's here to keep you out of legal trouble, I'm not a county attorney, I don't try to be one. But when he's telling me that, yes, you, to stay out of legal hot water, you need to do this, I, it's unfortunate, I guess, for District Two, and we're not gonna get into the maps, but Mr. Herr was touching on some pretty good points. It's not about race for me. I, I mean, I grew up as a ten-year-old hunting with Hayward and Lawrence Shelks, and I know you don't care about that, Mr. Udell, but in that workshop, I heard you say you didn't care about any other district, but you cared about District Two and black people. That's what you said.
I stand by that.
Right. Well, it's not about that for me.
Black people first, don't care about white people.
I, I don't. I don't. I don't. I, I don't. But, but it, it's not about race, it's about, for me, for, for me, I'm gonna speak about myself.
Well, do the right thing within your heart.
It's about, it's about what's, unfortunately, we're elected to make some really tough decisions, and our legal attorney has spoken, said that if, that, that we need to do this, and if we don't, then yeah, we're gonna be in legal hot water. And, and that ship sailed prior to him coming on the board. I, I mean, that's all I'm gonna say, I don't-
Well, if you should get in hot water-
Mr. Udell, I'm sorry, you've already had your chance. I think we've, I don't mean to, I, I think I've given you a fair amount of time to speak. Thank you, sir. Any, any further discussion?
My name is Keith Broders. I live at, uh, 201 Ranchera Street Northwest. The question that I basically have is, we hear about the populations of the various districts, but I don't hear anything about the number of registered voters in each of the districts. It seems to me that the number of registered voters in the districts is more important than just the total number of people in the district.
I can abres, address that if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's an excellent point. In fact, if you go back and you look at the 1985 judgment, which established, um, the current districts as they are, um, one of the subcategories there is registered voters. However, subsequent litigation has said we go by the population, not registered voters, or the other way of looking at it is voting eligible people, so people over the age of eighteen. But for purposes of redistricting, the law's pretty straightforward that we do it by population. The point's well taken, though, but there's just case law that says that's how we have to decide by.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Perkins.
And I was just thinking, just reflecting back in my mind here also, that when our former attorney brought this up about redistricting, he did mention about saying that, uh, the district, oh, then, the district that I, that I'm representing, he did just exclude in that district, and he spoke that on, uh, former attorney. I'm not sure how that was, that played out, um, but he did speak about that and say that district would be, um, changed with the exception of this district. So, I'm not, you know, I know he's not on here now, but I mean, that was brought up by Mr. Udell and a couple more people that brought it up, and I did hear Mr. Prabat did bring that up, and I think you all might have heard that as well, when he was here serving as our county attorney. So, I was just wondering how, now, how that would work, and I mean, he did bring it out saying that with the exception of this district wouldn't be making a change on.
Again, to answer the question, I can't speak for what previous attorneys represented. I do know that Mr. Prabat didn't have the benefit when making representations about what would or would not happen, of having the population figures from the 2020 census per district as provided by Mr. Spitzer. Those figures only came in once I came on as the attorney. But I can say unequivocally, um, that the law requires that each district within a county be of roughly equal population as closely as is practicable, and that it doesn't carve out a, there is no exception for why a particular district was created at a certain period of time. I understand what may have been said by previous attorneys, I can't speak to them, but, uh, I do know that I've spoken with, um, many, many other attorneys in this particular area of the law, and, um, 'cause I, I do understand the impact that this has on District Two. I was the one who tried to get a meeting together to discuss it as soon as we understood what it was. That said, it doesn't change equal protection, one person, one vote, and District Two is contemplated in that for purposes of the counting.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Is there anyone else wishing to say anything on this before we get to this? Seeing none, plus the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
I would move to approve redistricting.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Land to redistrict. Is there a second?
Can I speak for him?
We need to, we should probably take a break. But if you wanna speak, go ahead.
I'm just gonna go by the direction of the attorney, but then again, I was going by the direction of the attorney of what he has told us, but, and I don't feel nothing racist, I think of this man as a brother, and, uh, I don't think a man gets elected because of his color, I think it's because of the job he does. And I honestly believe, in my heart, if you do a good job, or any of us do a good job, we could be, if we do a bad job, we could be out next term, you know?
Hundred and sixty-five years.
Mr. Udell, please.
I'm on.
You already getting a line there.
Well, Mr. Udell.
Because what you're doing is unjust, you know it.
You're out of order, Mr. Udell, please. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made, made by Commissioner Land, a second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Perkins voting nay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mr. Morrison.
The board having approved two redistrict, I turn our attention to the proposed maps to revisit where we were at the workshop. If the board will recall, there were originally three maps, um, and at the workshop, the consensus seemed to be that we should go with alternative three, because alternative three had the highest percentage of, um, black people living in it, um, to try to maintain as close as we could what had occurred pursuant to the 1985 judgment. So, at that- So at that, and so what we see, if we're looking up there at the wall, or if you're following along at home on the, the agenda, is, so that's, the first one is alternative three, and alternative three has a population spread of 7.15 points between the highest population district and the lowest population district. Then, if the members of the Board will recall, Commissioner Land brought up that part of District, part of Map Three, which would change part of his district and bring it into District Two, if that were put back, back into his district, as the residents of that part of the county were mostly white, it would have the effect of increasing the overall African-American percentage of District Two. And the consensus seemed to be to ask Mr. Spitzer to prepare an alternative map to incorporate that change. That is Map Three B One. And the population spread on Map Three B One is 10.24 points, which is above the presumptively permissible 10 points. However, if you look at your agenda packet, you will see a letter from Mr. Spitzer authorizing, or who says in his capacity as the expert hired by this Board, that slightly exceeding that 10 points would be permissible for purposes of keeping that community of color as high, the percentage of people in that community as high as possible. And so, and it also, in the context of the lawsuit that had previously been filed and made. So therefore, he presented Map Three A. There are two more maps. After those maps were generated, it was brought to my attention, and also to Mr. Spitzer's attention, that both Map Three and Map Three B One have a odd jagged shape as you proceed down 129, which was the original border between District One and District Four before you get to District Two. And I asked Mr. Spitzer if that boundary could be reestablished to the current boundary, which is following 129 as a more natural path, as a more natural district line between Districts One and Four. And he said that could be accomplished. So we get Map Three A, which is Map, which is alternative three, but makes Highway 129 the border between District One and Four into District Two. The population differential there is 8.07 points, which is within the 10-point permissible range. And then he made the same change to Map Three B One, and that's what gives us Map Three B One A, which makes that same change of making Highway 129 the border between District One and District Four. And that gives a deviation of 10.27 points. And again, that's outside of the permissible, the presumptively permissible 10-point range. However, again, Mr. Spitzer opines that, that differential is permissible, or there's, that is an acceptable reason, given the history that's been discussed at length, both here and at the county workshop. So those are the four maps as they exist right now. And so I just need a motion, and second, and three votes to approve one of those maps to relay to Mr. Spitzer, so that way we can get a legal description of what the proposed new districts ought to be. And with that, I yield to the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Is there any public comment on the maps?
Do it. I hope not. Councilman Jefferson, question, certain population maps. And if you all can tell both side, you all can tell.
Name and address for the record, Mr. Jefferson.
City Councilman Tommy Jefferson, 516 Rogers Avenue Northwest, Live Oak, Florida. And I've heard a whole lot of things. But question on this map, can you, whoever the map, going to be expert on this tonight, Mrs. Spitzer's not here, how many?
The only difference.
What goes down? Black voters, or you pulling, or number of blacks, in each one of this new section that we're coming up with to do District Two, how many of those are black? I'm not going to say minority, because that consists of a whole lot of different folks. But how many blacks out of each one of those districts that we pulled into District, that's affected by this map, that we pulled into District Two? Can anybody answer that for me?
It'd take a minute, but.
I can answer, Mr. Chairman. I've got that.
Go ahead, Commissioner, I mean, Attorney Morrison.
Yes, sir. So Councilman Jefferson, I'll just go by the individual maps, and I can tell you which one, the populations in each. So Map Three, well, here, actually, let me start with.
Now, let's deal with Map Three, the one we're talking about trying to use.
Yes, sir.
Let's go with that one.
So alternative three, the one furthest on the left, that has a black population of 32%?
No, give me, give me some numbers. Let's don't go with percentage.
All right, 2,565 black people. It'll have a white population of 4,022. That'd be 50.2%. If you want to go to the one next to it, that's Map Three A.
Hold on, hold on, one second, one second. What is the present population now, blacks, white, in District Two?
The present population of the current districts of District Two, District Two has a total population of 5,386. Of that population, 2,527 are white, 1,947 people, or 36.1% are black, as we sit here today.
Mm-hmm.
That's the current district. So we went over alternative three, alternative Three A. Under that proposed map, District Two would have a white population of 4,022 people, or 50 point, 50, 4,022 white people, percent white would be 50.2%. The population would be 2,500, the black population would be 2,565, or 32%. If we go to the next map, Map Three B One, in that map, the white population would be 3,755 people, or 49.1%. The black population would be 2,555, or 33.4% of the district. And lastly, Map Three B One, I'm sorry, I was reading from Map Three B One A before, so that was the one on the far right. Map Three B One would have a population, a white population of 3,755, or 49.1% white, and population black, 2,555, or 33.4% black.
And we need to be within the 10% range?
All of the maps provided, Councilmen, two of the maps, Three and Three A, are within the 10%. Map Three B One and Three B One A are 10.24 and 10.27% population differential. However, it increases the percentage of African-Americans inside the district, and we have a finding by Mr. Spitzer, our expert, that that is a permissible reason to slightly exceed that 10%. So if you were to think about it in terms of RPMs, like on an engine, if you're at 10 or less, you're in the, you're fine. If you get between 10 and 16%, you're in high orange, and then beyond that 16%, you're in impermissibly red. So we're just slightly above, we're in that orange range. So if the Board were to choose to adopt Map Three B One or Three B One A, the Board would also have to adopt Mr. Spitzer's letter and its findings about the necessity of exceeding that 10%.
What's the difference?
Take 25.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
I have another question, but I, I'm pure.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else?
Have you heard briefly?
Yes, ma'am.
1200.
Having, having looked at these maps, as best someone who is not an expert can tell, I wanted to, to urge and suggest that the Board vote for either of the two proposals on the right. That tiny amount that it's different, it's been stated by the expert, won't make a difference. It won't subject you to more legal action one way or the other. But what it does do is it maybe does make a bit of a difference to help increase the number of African-American voters in that district, and bring it a little closer to where it is. And again, my position was to ask you all to defer this decision, but if you're going to go forward, I would ask all of you to vote for one of the two on the right that gives the African-American citizens a better chance at elected, election to this Board and to this.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
I'll speak to that. In, in the workshop, my, my initial thought process was to get the point differential as low as is possible, being fiscally responsible. But during the workshop, and, and hearing the numbers, the numbers, I mean, they're so close on the, on the population that I, I made the recommendations to move, there was two or three census blocks, U.S. census blocks, out of my district, or back into my district, because I knew that they were mostly white, and the census showed that, which by doing so increased the percentage of black folks in District Two. That's why you have Three B One and Three B One A. And, and I like Three B One A the best. It keeps, Three B, Three B One kind of goes off of U.S. 129 on the north, and there was another road, I don't know where I did with my note, but where, where it kind of got off of, of a road, which makes it very difficult for super voter elections to office when the, when it uses a power line, so to speak, to determine what precinct or what district that that person may be in. So I like the roads. I think Three B One A is probably the best representation of that. And the percentage, I mean, the percentage will be 30, of voting age, 32.4, by using One A, I mean, we're talking about blacks, percentage of black, black people in District Two, and it, it's currently 34.9, voting age. Pretty close, percentage-wise. So I would agree with you. Either one on the right, I would agree with. I like the one on the farthest right the best, only because it, it, it uses mostly roads as the district boundaries, which makes it easier for our precincts and districts to be figured. I'll end with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Land.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Perkins.
And I also strongly agree with Commissioner Land. If you're going to go with a map, since we got this point, Attorney Three B One A, so we stay with the roads, easy for even us as Commissioners to be able to find our boundaries. But I, I would like to, because of, to have, I'm losing a part of my district, which would go out to 417, and I do have some people here that's in that district, that's here tonight. If we did it, a, recalcerate the map, to remove some things that I would, that should take that shaded area, that blue shaded area back into the district, I would, I would like to do so. But I, I do see with the map, Attorney Three B One A, you do have a higher percentage of 33%, if we want to talk about blacks in that district, so get 30% more in there. But I would like to see if we could have Mr. Spitzer to change some blocks to be able to include that area that I once had in the district I'll lose, what I did have as far as representing those people out on 417. But there, there are, if you look at it, there's a lot of blacks in that area.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morrison, do you have anything to say on that?
I'm sorry. Well, I mean, it's at the discretion of the Board, so if I understand what Commissioner Perskins is asking is, can we go back and ask Mr. Spitzer to redo, to, to start again, to incorporate more of the part of your district that you're losing?
Yes, sir.
I mean, the answer is yes. There's infinite permutations to a certain extent. So if the Board chooses to not adopt any of the maps and gives me direction as to how to, what to tell Mr. Spitzer, then certainly that's my job.
Mr. Hale.
Mr. Morrison, I, I don't recall, and Mr. Perkins, I don't recall, but wasn't when we discussed out at 417, Mr. Perkins, I can't remember, I do not remember. I know there was some, some black residents out there, but didn't that block show more white than black, when Mr. Spitzer threw that up? And I'm just pulling off memory, so please.
If you, if you, if you were to go back and look at the, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, if you were to go back and look at the maps that were presented at the workshop, and that was really kind of the purpose of the workshop, to work through the different possible permutations. The first two maps kept all of District Two in District Two. It didn't cut off that eastern block, but the result of that was a fairly significantly lower amount of African-Americans in District Two. And so Mr. Spitzer, one of the instructions to Mr. Spitzer was to come up with a map that kept as high a population of African-Americans in District Two as is possible, without creating crazy gerrymanders. And this, and Map Three is what he came up with, and ultimately, my recollection from the workshop is that's why District, that's why alternative three was selected as the base map to use for the permutations we see here today.
Commissioner, Commissioner Mobley.
I'm with Mr. Perkins on that, but Three B One A is the one I would pick too, as well, with him and Mr. Land. And then I'll, you know, if Mr. Perkins wanted any part of that back, I'd be willing to, if it can be done.
Well, I think we done, I think we've, we've exhausted all the, all of this. We've been through these maps, I don't know how many times, and I think every Commissioner's had a chance to go up to the office and make their changes that they thought would help their district, and so.
And I would say that there's, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. There's no guarantee that any of the recommendations asked for would be viable pursuant to Mr. Spitzer. But again, what map to choose, or whether to choose any of these maps is a Board decision. That was the point I was trying to make.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
Before you, I just want to say, I, I agree with the other three Commissioners. The Three B One A is the one I was looking at, because it had the lowest difference there in the, the black and white population, so that was when I was.
And, and I don't know if I can be done with what Mr. Perkins is asking, but it's worth the question.
Commissioner Land.
Sorry, yes, sir. No, I'm fine. A couple things, is, is just so the public knows that weren't, that was not at the workshop. I mean, we were given, I forget how many maps, but ourselves in the school board were given four, four maps, five maps, and, and the point differential ranged from two points, two and a half points, to seven, eight points. And, and to, to be cognitive of the 1985, was it 85 ruling? This Board chose, and the school board, I believe, which said that they would go along with whatever we chose, and, you know, put the burdens on our backs, thanks to them. But nonetheless, we went with the highest point differential, which was seven and some change, I believe, with Map Number Three, meaning that in 2030, if the population continues to grow, there's a very likelihood that we will be at 10 or north of that again, and, and will, the same discussion will be being had again in the future, I assure you. But in light of all of that, we are making a, I feel like, we're making a very large effort to accommodate the, the feelings of the folks in District Two by adjusting the map to what we have now at Three B One A, which is 10.27 points, 10.27, and we're outside of the, the 10-point threshold. But Mr. Spitzer has said that there's reason that this, this would pass, for lack of better words, legally, and there's, there's reasons for that. But we, we played with all of the sale, U.S. census sale blocks that we could multiple times, and I don't know how many times the county attorney has been back and forth with Mr. Spitzer, because I wasn't. Mr. Spitzer, because I wasn't privy of the other four conversations that he had with you guys, but I know he's been back and forth at least three times, and you've got, and the product of that is all these multiple maps. So, I wanna accommodate Mr. Perkins in District Two as much as I can, but by putting forth that blue block on Three B One A back into Two, we're back to square one again, because that throws off all of the percentages in all the other districts, so then now we're back to the drawing board where we were at the workshop, trying to pick a map, because you can't just put all of those census blocks, no matter what color they are, the total population is gonna totally change. So, now you gotta adjust, not just the district lines between Two and Four, you gotta readjust them between Four and Five, Five and Three, Three and One, all the way around. So, we're back to the drawing board with a new map. That's where I'm at with it. I think that we've done, speaking for myself, and, and all of us, I mean, we've kicked this around and went back and forth with Spitzer a lot, and we got it, we're already above the 10 points, and, I mean, if the board wants to go back and redo it, that's fine with me, but we're gonna be back to the drawing board, and that won't be the only line that changes, because it's gonna affect the numbers on all the rest of them, based on the percentages.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna just weigh in here, 'cause it doesn't matter which map you choose in here, for me, it's about all the same. I'm good with Three B One A, and I'm like you, Commissioner Leon, I think we've put a lot of due diligence into this, it's been a lot of back and forth, we've redrawn maps, redone, and I think we've got it as best as you can get it, to increase the black population in District Two as much as humanly possible, while still doing the redistricting. So, I'm on board with Three B One A as well, that would be my choice. I just, I'm like you, I don't wanna go back to the drawing board again, we've done this a lot. Yes, sir.
Do each district have the same amount of population, maybe 8,000 something each?
It looks much closer.
District Two would still have 644 less than the other districts, so there is a cognitive effort to try to keep those percentages.
That's the only district that would have less?
Yes.
Yes.
Total population.
Total population.
Right, 'cause at the workshop, you had it laid out, everybody had the same amount.
No, the same amount was a, was a, was a, what do you call, he calls it ideal population. 8299 is the ideal, if you divide, the total county population divided by five.
If you got it exactly right, it would be 8299 people in each district.
One thing I would just point out, Mr. Chairman, just to go along with what the, with what you and Mr. Leon had pointed out, I just wanna point the board to the findings of Mr. Spitzer, where he said, and the only reason I'm bringing this forward is if the board does choose to adopt one of the Three B Ones, the board's also going to have to adopt the findings of Mr. Spitzer, where he said that, speaking to Mr. Leon's going over point 10, the 10 points, where he said, quote, "I believe that such a slight divergence from common population standards is acceptable, based on legitimate considerations furthering other rational policies. In this case, the expressed intent of the legislative bodies of the county and school district, maintaining as high a percentage of African American population in District Two as is realistically possible, in furtherance of the goals of the Voting Rights Act, and to the extent possible to abide by the general intent of the Court's 1985 order, given the changes in demographic patterns in Suwannee County over the past 38 years." So, Mr. Spitzer has said that the Three B One, or Three B One A, is the most realistic way possible to put as many African Americans in District Two that he can come up with. So, if we go back to the drawing board, stating it in the inverse, each map would have less of a concentration of African Americans in it than we have here.
What would you think the way forward, Mr. Morrison, do we have a vote on each map?
No, sir. So, what we would need is a vote and a second as to one map, and then a, if there's a majority, then that would be the, that would be the map, and then we would need, if it's one of the Three B One permutations, I would also need a vote and a second to adopt the findings of Mr. Spitzer as the findings of the board, and then what would happen next is, I would take that map, and Mr. Spitzer would, have Mr. Spitzer create up a legal description of what our new districts would look like, and then at the next board meeting, we would have the formal resolution adopting, here's the new districts. So, essentially, I'm just asking the board, which, the board to pass by resolution, by board action, which map to go with.
Thank you, sir. It's a pleasure of the board.
Are you looking for a motion?
I am.
I would move to approve redistricting using Map Three B One A.
I have a motion by Commissioner Leon to approve Alternative Three B One A map. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Mobley, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero for Alternative Three B One A.
Mr. Chairman, I would also ask for there to be a vote and a second to adopt and approve the memorandum of Mr. Spitzer, dated July 24, 2023, attached to the agenda, and adopt its, and adopt Mr. Spitzer's findings of fact as the findings of the board in relation to Map Three B One A.
Do I have a motion to approve? So moved, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Leon, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Motion unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. All righty. Mr. Moore, how soon, once all this, how soon would a new map be printed out?
I mean, that's it, Map Three B One A.
Ma'am?
She wanted a map, was she asking?
Ms. Owens, Ms. Owens, here you go. You want it? Yeah, that's yours. I can give this?
Yeah.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. You get a big one.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer at Supervisor Elections Office, as soon as they're available, I'm sure would have copies of them. Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Spimo, for coming out.
He want a map?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I mean, Jennifer will have them traced out soon, too.
All right.
Where we at now?
Moving on to general business, additional agenda items.
Thank you.
Are there any additional agenda items?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none, public concerns and comments, anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir. Name and address, please, I'm sorry.
Steve Fontana, 21181, 144th Street. I just wanna reiterate, tonight we approved the second tower, this was the second, I've only been here two years, and I saw two towers go up both times, the safety of the tower was questioned, and the response from the corporation was, you don't have a legal right to ask that question. Okay, that's, that's something, and that's not your fault, but I think we, the people of Suwannee County and the board, have a right to see what limits they're checking for monthly, and why those limits are okay, from a peer-reviewed scientific study, and we, I believe we have a right to do it, whether the federal law says it or not.
Thank you, sir. Any, anyone else? Seeing none. Administrator comments and information?
Don't have anything.
Board members' inquiries, requests, and comments, Commissioner Perkins.
No, sir, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Mobley.
I'm good, too.
Commissioner Leon.
No, sir, I just appreciate everybody coming out and being here, we had a large crowd tonight, a lot of them have gone, but, well, we say we're here to hear, but I appreciate everybody coming and giving input, and, and being respectful, and I think everyone knew that this would be a sensitive, sensitive subject, I hate that, but, but then again, it was about the numbers, and as unfortunate as they may be, but we didn't come up with those, the U.S. Census did, and that's what we have to use, go by, by, you know, federal law. But at any rate, I wasn't here last week, so I hope you guys held the fort down, glad to be back, and I'll leave with that.
It was actually an easier meeting. Don't worry.
Hey, I'll go on another vacation if y'all are funding it.
You can take one, start it tomorrow.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, I will. And all I need is your credit card, Mr. Chairman.
We'll be moving all your money over to District Five. Hey, Commissioner Hale, that's what I'm talking about.
I just wanna say, I like Commissioner Leon's, and then what else, it's a touchy matter, and it's, it's the hard decisions, I mean, and we try to be as fair as possible, and I do feel like we've done it, and Mr. Perkins, I hope you do too, 'cause I respect the mess out of him, and right now, and I always try to brag on our crews and our folks and our employees, but I gotta say, I've been leaning on Mr. LT and his crew a lot here lately, because of the rain, and limbs, and trees, and grass, and things like that, and I just, hats off to that whole department right there, they have just been working their tails off, and I appreciate that.
Oh, I just wanna bring up, Senator Simon was here, was it Friday, Timmy? Friday, and we wanna just thank him for coming to Suwannee County, and there was a group of us that took a little tour with the senator, and showed him the catalyst side, and, help me here, Mr. Norris, where else did we go?
I was just like my company. My bad. That's your feeling, you're wanting one of them.
We spent a good, fair amount of time all afternoon with him, and just showed him what we had, where the infrastructure money that we're asking for, and that they've already appropriated, where it was going, what it was being used for, and so, I think Sheriff Lamb from Lafayette County brought him over to Brantford at some point, I don't know if y'all knew that or not.
I don't see what the mail, what did he do, he was leaving mail.
Yeah, y'all was, yeah, you and Commissioner Leon, y'all was cutting my knees out, y'all got to him before I did. But was glad to have him here, it was real, it was a real good, a good deal with the senator, and we just wanna thank him for his time, and that's about all I've got, and I just need a motion to dismiss. Oh, I almost missed.
I'm fairly new to Keith Broder's, 201 Ranchera Street, Northwest. I've only been here in Florida now for three years, but one of the things I'm extremely proud of is the fact that out of the 67 county superintendents, our superintendent was selected as the Superintendent of the Year for the entire state of Florida, and I think that we should be very thankful that we have a leader of our school district that is, you know, looking for the best interests of the people, he's a real strong advocate for the Constitution and civics education, and I think we should be very proud of this Ted Ross for the wonderful job that he's doing.
Amen. Agreed.
Thank you for that. I just need a motion to dismiss.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, aye.
Aye. I appreciate how you handled everything on that.
Yes, sir.
I got it.